Good evening. I now call the Winton Woods Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, February 22nd, 2016. I'd like to ask if everyone would cooperate in turning off your cellphones or at least putting them on silent tonight? And then please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Rogless?
Here.
Mr. Burdy?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present. Our first item on the agenda this evening is our District Honors, Recognizations, Gifts, and Introductions. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. I'd like to recognize, or the Board would like to recognize, the incredible ladies from the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for the Community Spirit Award. So, I'm gonna read all this great stuff about you, so you have to stand up. Right up here. Because you have to say something about your organization after we're done.
Okay.
You didn't come along, did you?
I did not.
Okay, then two should stand up. All right. All right. February Community Spirit Award. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Phi Psi Omega Chapter, Forest Park, Ohio. Fifty students at Winton Woods Primary South in Springfield Township started their school year with new backpacks filled with school and classroom supplies, healthy snacks, and a bookmark with nutritional information, all courtesy of Women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Phi Psi Omega Chapter, Forest Park, Ohio. What makes this donation to our students even more special is that the continuation of the partnership has gone on for ten years between the sorority and the district. These students and their teachers greatly appreciate the educational support that these backpacks provide. This donation is truly a gift, as our young warriors arrive on their first day of school well-supplied and ready to learn. We're grateful for the many years that AKA has sponsored Winton Woods students, and we applaud the members for their generous service to our district. This month, we're pleased to present the February Community Spirit Award to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Phi Psi Omega Chapter, Forest Park, Ohio. Thank you.
Can I say something?
So, thank you Superintendent Smith. My name is Pamela Dial, and I'm the President of Phi Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And here with me is Mrs. Latonya Denson, who's the Vice President, and also, who is, she's not, she's among your family, Ms. Courtney Wilson, she is a member of our chapter as well. We find it, it's truly an honor that you are recognizing us, and I want to say thank you for that honor, because it enables us to live our mission of service to all mankind. Just a little bit about our organization, is that we were founded 108 years ago, and we were founded by students, college students, one generation removed from slavery. The youngest member of our founding, of our founders was 15, so not much younger than some of the young people that I see here. And the organization that they founded, they recognized that they had a privilege to be college students, and that did not, they did not take that privilege lightly. And they founded this organization built on the foundation of sisterhood and with the mission of serving all mankind. And so, by our service to Winton Woods, you enable us to live the mission of our organization, to continue the legacy of our founders. And so, although we, you're recognizing us, we feel really blessed that we have the honor to have this recognition and to have this opportunity to serve. Because again, we are fully committed to continuing the legacy that was founded 108 years ago, and so we thank you very much for this opportunity to serve this district, the students, and just, and with the parents that are in the audience, we thank you for, we also have another program, our SEND program, that we work directly with students in the Wintonville High School. And so, we thank the parents for entrusting us with their precious children, and again, we just want to thank you, and we look forward to continuing the partnership.
Very good. Thank you. You know, Dr. Johnson, I tried several years to get into that organization, but I realized it wasn't gonna take me.
They don't allow me.
No, they didn't take me. All right.
Sorry, they don't allow me.
Didn't work out.
Yeah. And I'm sure you had your own reasons for that.
Unselfish, of course.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do the Girl Scouts, and we have Shred Day.
Right.
We have a Shred Day.
What's the date? You might say one more thing?
Yeah.
Yes, so one of the things that we do, we have a Girl Scouts program in the district, and we also sponsor Shred Day. And that will be June, June 13th?
June, the first Saturday.
First, the first Saturday in June. June 4th.
We wanna get our own Courtney Wilson.
Oh, of course.
See, I call her all the time.
And our colors are pink and green, if you didn't notice.
Thank you for putting us first on the agenda, because we have another commitment.
Have a great evening.
Congratulations to the other recipients.
Thank you very much. Before we present this next award, I'd like for you to hear a little bit why the Kiwanis has the energy to kind of bring this award forward.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. First of all, let me say that Kiwanis is a group of volunteers whose mission is to save one child in one community at a time. On a personal level, I like to think I'm working to build up children's to their full potential, which in the long run helps to strengthen the community and also to strengthen society.
Bravo. Thank you. So, our next recipient is the Kiwanis Characterous Key Citizenship Award. Mr. Sam Dean. So, I'm gonna read a little bit about you, Sam. If I get anything in here that's not true, you stop me, okay? All right. Sam Dean is one of Winton Woods High School's most outstanding young men. Imagine the year 2016, and someone's reading about you having a son that's an outstanding young man. I bet you're proud. If you ask any of Sam's teachers who their favorite student is, they will invariably say that Sam is their favorite. He is hardworking, well-respected, well-liked by all of his peers, and is always maintaining a positive attitude. Sam has been able to maintain As and Bs all year in his classes as well. In Sam's spare time, he is on the JV basketball team where he was elected by coaches and teammates as a captain. He also assists neighbors with yard work, helps out teachers, and he has aided many families with moving and all odd jobs. Sam Dean is a role model to others both in and out of school. He demonstrates impeccable character each and every day. For those reasons, I believe Sam is deserving of the Character Award. So, Sam, all this hard work, all these great things that you do, who inspires you?
My mom.
All right, okay, all right. So, you wanna say a few words, Sam?
Uh...
You're a little shy? It's all right.
All right, the Kiwanis Character is a key award is presented to Sam Dean in special recognition of his outstanding character trait of citizenship. Within the character of an individual lies the welfare of the nation. It is character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community. And I would like to say there is also a monetary award that goes along with this. Congratulations.
Who did you bring? Who did you bring tonight with you, Sam? Come on up for the picture. Thank you for all your great inspirational messages and everything. Yeah. You gonna be on varsity next year? Maybe we'll win some games. Thanks, Sam. All right. That was pretty good, wasn't it, Jordan? All right. Our next recommendation is for Jordan Braswell, Kiwanis Gold Star Student of the Month. Come on up, Jordan. Jordan Braswell deserves to be the Student of the Month because she is an outstanding student and a wonderful young lady. Jordan has earned straight As for every quarter this year in what is a very demanding honor schedule. Teachers enjoy having her in their class, not only because she's a great student, but she is a great example to others as well. Jordan is an active participant in class, she's a leader among her peers, and she respects the ideas of others. What perhaps makes Jordan's accomplishments even more impressive is the fact that she also heavily, is heavily involved in the school community. Jordan's in the prestigious Symphonic Band, she is a varsity cheerleader as, and just a sophomore, and she is a dance captain of the upcoming musical Cinderella. These are all very demanding on Jordan's time, but somehow she finds time to maintain her stellar grade point average. Jordan Braswell combines superior academics with a busy schedule of activities, all while being a likable, well-mannered young lady who I'm proud to call a Winton Woods Warrior. I can't think of a more deserving candidate to be this month's Student of the Month. Jordan Braswell. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, who did you bring tonight?
My mother and my father.
All right. Come on up. Picture time. So that we can remember this moment. Bravo. Thank you, Jordan. Our next recipient, Ms. Bomar, pronounce your first name. Camilla?
Camila.
Camila. Doesn't quite say that, but this is good. All right. Camila Bomar. Yes. Come on up.
Oh, okay, good. I was gonna say, we might have to reprint the certificate.
Winton Woods' Camila Bomar is Skyline Student Athlete of the Month. Senior Camila Bomar was named Winton Woods City Schools' Skyline Student Athlete of the Month for February. Bomar, who plays girls' basket, who plays girls' basketball, has an overall GPA of 3.4 and is ranked 31 out of 220 students in her class. Camilla is a tremendous athlete who has played various sports for Winton Woods High School, said Athletic Director David Lumpkin. She not only excels on the field of competition, but in the classroom as well. To be nominated for the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, students must maintain an academic standard of GP, of 3.0 GPA or above in the previous quarter, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, and other students and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice games and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty and playing by the rules, have high moral character. The Student Athlete, the Student Athlete of the Month award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Student-honored athletes receive a $20 Skyline gift card as well. So, Ms. Bomar, you wanna say a few words?
Um, I wanna say thank you, and I wanna say that the people that influenced me the most is my mom, my sister, and my brother, and no matter how tired my mom is, she's always there for me, so I wanna thank her.
Bravo, Mom. Should come on up for the family picture? All right, our next recipient, Mr. Amstott. Joshua Amstott, a fourth-year teacher at Winton Woods High School's Academy of Global Studies, is always ready to take on more work and responsibility to ensure students receive the best education possible. It's this dedication and work ethic that led to Amstott's being chosen as the February Skyline Teacher of the Month for Winton Woods City Schools. Amstott teaches Algebra II, Precalculus, and honors Precalculus, and this year became the AGS facilitator. In this role, Josh has taken true leadership toward continuing the success of the AGS program and oversees many of the components that make AGS a truly rewarding program for staff and students. This is written by the Assistant Principal, Ms. Strauss. To help with the implementation of the New Tech Model throughout the high school, Amstott competed, completed rigorous instruction with New Tech that made him an official New Tech trainer. In this capacity, Josh works with teachers throughout the high school to help them learn the New Tech Model and create and implement New Tech projects in their class. Amstott also coaches cross-country for Winton Woods High School. Mr. Amstott, thank you for everything that you do. I've actually observed your class, and it's absolutely incredible. So, thank you for everything. I know you have a few words.
I always do, yeah, absolutely. Well, I appreciate those nice words that you gave me, absolutely. Also appreciate that my daughter here is participating well and making it through the night, but honestly, I just wanna say that Winton Woods, oops, well, that's fine. Winton Woods has allowed me to really grow so much as an educator that I couldn't even imagine before. You know, my use of technology now, the different methods that I've learned how to teach, project-based learning, I always wanted to do it going into college, or going out of college into the workforce, but never really knew how to do it. Winton Woods has just offered me so much, allowed me to take kids internationally, allowed me to experience Arkansas and DC, and I could just go on and on and on, but I just wanna thank each and every one of you for everything the district has done for me as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
She took off the best part, the gift card.
All right. Each month, the superintendent gets to drive around the district and find the best art that he can possibly find. This time, when I had the pleasure of visiting the intermediate school, I saw an incredible piece by a young lady by the name of Sierra Robertson. Sierra? Sierra, when you came in, I knew it was you. As soon as I saw you at the door. So, imagine me, I'm looking at over 400 pieces of art, and this one just caught my eye. Incredible piece. What inspired you to draw that?
Um, I just like purple and like dark colors.
And that just brought it out of you?
Mm-hmm.
All right, fantastic. This artwork is going to be framed, and it will stay in our schools until Sierra graduates, and then we'll turn it into the art museum and make a lot of money off of it. All right? I'm your sponsor, okay? All right. Who did you bring with you tonight?
Um, my dad, and my love, and my sister.
All right, the whole family, come on up. See, Mom and Dad, all that artwork she was drawing all over the walls at home pays off. It happens. Yeah, leave it here, we need that. We have to put it in a frame. Yeah, you're trying to take this away. No, we need to keep that. All right. Is Cameron here? Cameron received the principal selection, and Ms. Miranda, would you like to hold this piece up? Very creative piece. And then there's one last piece, Jamal McLean. Oh, there he is. Jamal, can you explain your piece a little bit? Tell us a little bit about it.
It was a cheetah. It was a cheetah chasing a, I don't know what type of animal that is. And it was an ocean flowing over it in the mountains and trying to smudge that up, trying to make it realistic.
Very good. Incredible. So, Mom, you let him do whatever he needs to do in the house. He's creating this thing. He's making it happen. Bravo. Let's get a picture of you. Madam President and Board, our final acknowledgement goes to the Union Savings Bank in Forest Park. Mrs. Sentia Van Zent, thank you for your generosity in creating the Listening Center at the Winton Woods Preschool. Their donations included a rolling cart, CD player, four headphones, and my first informational tech songs, read-alongs, five sets of four National Geographic books and a CD approximately valued at $590. So, if you see her, thank her, and way to go. Fantastic. I'm sure the children will really enjoy that experience from National Geographic. That's all.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. Congratulations again to our spectacular students and staff. We'll now take a five-minute recess. We'll now resume our regular board meeting, and we have no comments from the public, so we will move right into the approval of minutes as attached. Board, unless you see any necessary corrections to these, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is our Treasurers Report. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Through the month of January, we had year-to-date revenues in the general fund of $25 million, and for the month, we had $3.1 million. And as you know, that the real estate advances started coming in because you all got your tax bills, and most of those will come in during the month of February, so that'll be on next month's report. Also, in the general fund for the year-to-date, we've spent $27 million, and you may have noticed that the month of January is one of your most expensive months, because during the month of January, we contribute to all of our employees' health savings account, and that was $350,000. And also, we had severance of $273,000. So, the month of January is a expensive month, one of the most expensive months of the year. So, at the, our encumbered balance on January 31st was $13.6 million, of which $12.8 was the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Any questions for Mr. Seymour at this time? Well, with no objections being heard, let the financial report for the month of January 2016 be submitted to audit, and Mr. Seymour will move right on with your recommendations.
And then, for investments for the month of January, we had approximately $17 million invested and earned $23,850 on our portfolio.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order?
Make a motion to accept Treasurer Seymour's report as submitted.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda are our reports from the superintendent. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. This information is for discussion purposes, but I'd like for you to pay attention to one report, one event that's really taking place this week. It's a very interesting, interactive read-aloud at the preschool. So, it's called the Preschool Literacy Night, and I can tell you, when you attend those events, when the board attends those events, the parents and students and the teachers are very, very appreciative, and they're very excited. There are several other events, but I just, that one just kinda jumped out at me. So, if your schedule permits, please plan to attend the preschool night this week on February 25th.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. We can move right into 8.02.
Yes, the next one is for information and discussion, the TI Trend Data for Transportation. And that report, it's really about how students are transported, and if some transportation issues are impractical to take place, meaning the students live too far away, or the accommodations are not appropriate. So, there is compensation for that, but there's usually, just for conversation, if the board has any questions about it, I would be willing to entertain those questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Smith on that report? All right, seeing none, we'll just keep moving along here. Superintendent, back to you for your recommendations.
Yes, the recommendation, 9.01 Personnel Schedules. To approve the personnel schedules as presented, Schedule A, Resignations; Schedule B, Certificated Employment; Schedule C, Support Staff; Schedule D, Supplementals; and Schedule E, Leaves.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Superintendent Smith's personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 9.02, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation is to approve the overnight extended trip to Camp Campbell Guard, and I'd like to say one exciting thing about this experience. This trip is related to the educational program of the district. Students will be creating real-life experiences that will help them learn about the Underground Railroad, Native Americans, fossils, and more. So, it's a very educational experience that our kids come back and talk about it for months.
Thank you Superintendent. Board, a motion would be in order?
I make a motion that the trip, we approve the trip, the overnight extended student trip to Camp Campbell Guard as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
I do have a comment or a question. I notice, and I'll just make a sweeping comment about all of the proposals, I noticed that some of them are very well detailed, gives a lot of details, and answers all the questions, but I don't know if we're missing something on one of them, and there's a question that's missing on here. You know, I think this is a great opportunity, but moving forward, I'd like to see a little bit more detail, or just consistency across. This one was missing the answer to number three, under...
The Fund and Collections?
No, under Students and Staff. Because I believe this is a three-day trip, and it would be good to understand the question three, which is asking about how many students are experiencing some academic problems.
I'm sorry, I don't see where you're looking at.
Question three.
Are we talking about the current one that the motion's on the table for?
Uh-huh. No, Camp Campbell Guard.
Yeah, usually what happens, Mrs. Rugless, when it says how many students are currently experiencing academic problems, when you don't see a number there, they're usually not.
Okay.
So it's more incentivized.
It would be good if they said that, though. I think to her point.
And I think that makes a different motion.
Yeah, it makes a difference because when you're saying, okay, they're going to have three days out of school, it'd be good for the public to know that there aren't any children that are experiencing some difficulty.
And if you look at number one on the next page, how will missed work be made up? No work will be need to be made up since all fifth graders will be attending camp. Those students who do not attend camp will receive instruction from the fifth-grade teachers that do not attend the trip. So there are still instructional strategies going on, but we really encourage students to attend the trip, and we really try not to hold them back as a consequence because of the experiences that they gain. If this was something like a King's Island or something like that, you may not have that same opportunity, but when it's something where it's going to be an educational process through the entire experience, we really encourage kids to really get themselves in gear to attend. Okay?
Under what circumstances?
Is it not a general rule that if they are having academic problems, then, like, they would help them get caught up before they actually go on the trip?
Yeah, because these, yes, very good, good point. Because these recommendations and these reports are submitted a month and a half in advance. But I will make sure we include that in the future. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, we'll move into 9.03.
9.03, Proposal for Overnight Extended Trip, Academy of Global Studies at Winton Woods High School, Model UN Nations Academic Competition, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. And this trip is related to the educational programs of the district. This is an academic competition, excuse me, in which our students represent countries from around the world and debate real-world issues that are currently affecting our global population. The students will be exhibiting their skills in four pillars of ISSN as they debate these issues in small group settings among other students from the Midwest. The real good thing about the Model UN Conference, the students will come back and give you a full play-by-play of their experiences, why they think it should be invoked on the next group, because they're looking out for their peers. These, most of these students will be seniors, but it's a very encouraging conversation because not only do they take the trip, they tell and explain to the board why it should be open for the next group of students coming after them. So, great opportunity in Champaign, so we'll look forward to hearing the report when they come back.
Board, a motion would be in order.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the visit for the academic competition for the Model UN to University of Urbana, is it where they're born?
Yes.
Yeah, University of Urbana.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that the last time that they came back and did a presentation, there was energy left in the room after they had left. So I think that, I look forward to hearing their, and they were so excited, they said, "We want to bring the competition to Winton Woods." So if we can get that, that's what we want. We want that kind of warrior pride, so if we can get that, you know, from such a trip, then it's worth it.
And what's nice about these programs are it offers continuity each year. In each next successive year, the students look forward to this program.
Right.
And I'd say that the write-up of this one was very clear, concise, and it was very comprehensive to help me understand what was being presented for approval.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour.
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 9.04.
Yes, Madam President and Board, this next trip for board approval is Camp Joy Outdoor Educational Leadership Program. And there are two pieces to this that I'd like to read. Number one, in what ways will the students benefit? Students will have opportunities to experience team-building initiatives and be exposed to an inclusive and challenging environment. And number two, what way will the district benefit? Students will increase achievement and demonstrate new skills and awareness of teaming leadership qualities. The district will benefit by offering students with multiple disabilities and experience to learn academic skills such as hands, science, a visual and hands-on experience in history, Pioneer Cabin, math skills such as geometry, zip line. Students will learn to read a map for a scavenger hunt in the woods. This relates to ELL, ELLA skills. How will the trip be evaluated to determine the extent of which these benefits were realized? We'll evaluate the new skills of the students and how they relate in teaming situations in our school environment. Students will develop social bonding with their classmates by participation in team building and icebreakers. And again, please note, this is for students with disabilities. So incredible experience.
Thank you Superintendent Smith.
I make a motion that we approve the proposal for the overnight extended student trip to Camp Joy for the Outdoor Educational Leadership Program, May 4 through 6 this 2016.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that it's not often that students with disabilities get to go on field trips, and because they learn by doing so much more than by the book, that this is like, I mean, if a student without disabilities could benefit from a field trip, students with disabilities benefit probably double because they get to touch it, feel it, it becomes real to them. So, you know, I think that's, this is just a wonderful opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
We're missing...
Yeah, they only gave us one page, but the whole thing is in the...
Is it? Okay.
Also, I want to applaud our staff, Lisa Dai and Jim Bissel, who have done this for many years, 20 years and 24 years. So I appreciate the dedication of our staff to our students, giving us this opportunity. Many districts don't provide this opportunity.
Is there any further discussion?
Here it is.
You find it? Okay. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, we'll move into 9.05.
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve the school calendar for 2017 and '18 as presented. If you notice, this calendar is a year in advance. The executive team, along with the Teachers Association, wanted to always have a calendar that's moving forward as opposed to standing still. So the '16, '17, you've already approved, so this moves it into the next year for '17 and '18.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the school calendar for 2017, '18 as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Is there, can I, is there anything about this schedule that's significantly different than schedules in the past?
No. It's very, because remember, the new issue by the state, it's hours as opposed to days, and we exceed both of those. So...
Well, Superintendent Smith, I would just like to applaud you and your administrative staff for being proactive and getting these to us for approval a year in advance, something I don't believe was done in the past, so thank you for that.
If we can go five years in advance, we would try that.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 9.06.
Yes, this is part of your policy document, and it's 5113, Open Enrollment, and to approve 5113, Open Enrollment as Presented. So I know you guys have already read it and reviewed it. Are there any questions regarding 5113?
The only change in this is just the things...
Yes, sir. Yes.
And Board, we'll go ahead and do the motion, and then we'll move into discussion if you have further questions. So a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 5113, Open Enrollment as Presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any questions or further discussion?
Just to note that Mr. Birdy was making that this policy is pretty much the same. The only thing that we are changing is just the change in the date, you know, so that brings it up to date for the current year, calendar year. So that should be noted, that there's no other change, just the open enrollment dates.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam President, and the reason the, we have to be very, very kind of steady with doing that, students enrolling at such a late date really affects the strategies and the academic strategies that we're really trying to get our kids to be better prepared for, especially with us going to a more aggressive model like New Tech. Having that background sooner than later would be to our advantage. So this policy actually fits our new transitional plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Superintendent Smith. Well, we're, I'm going to defer my legislative report until next meeting in honor of our executive session that we have to go into tonight, and Mr. Cleary has done the same. If you find at your desk, he has dropped off the Great Oaks Report to you, so that's just for your reading and viewing pleasure. Our next item is board motions, and seeing none, we'll just move right on to board comments. Mrs. Rugless, any comments from you?
Um, no comments at this time.
Mr. Birdy?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Johnson?
Just want to say that we had a wonderful board retreat. This month was a month of training for the board. We had a board retreat on the 12th, I mean, on the 13th, and then, well, that was a Saturday. And also, Jessica and I went to a board leadership training just this past Saturday on the 20th. And just to let the public know that we don't just sit here and not try to educate ourselves, that we do try to get the training that we need to do the best job possible for, you know, the district. So just to say that, and to say that we appreciate the district for allowing us to attend those, you know, trainings, because it's very important that we're able to do our jobs.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mrs. Coon?
I agree with Dr. Johnson, so no other comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to point out that Dr. Johnson and I had the pleasure of attending the Board Officers' Training over the weekend that was facilitated by OSBA, and it was a very nutritious learning experience, and we have a lot of resources that we're bringing back to board members that we'll share with you in our next work session. I did want to point out that if you haven't already got this in the mail, board members, you'll probably get it soon. This is the Board Leadership Institute that's coming up in April, and I would highly recommend you going to that, so if you're interested in this or you want to see this pamphlet, let me know. And then if you want to go, just let Mr. Seymour know, and he'll take care of signing you up for that. Mr. Superintendent, anything from you?
I'd like to read one quick letter. Not quick. As you know, we're moving our transitional model into a New Tech Network experience. I'd like to read a letter from Lydia Dobbins, President and CEO. Dear Superintendent Smith, thank you for reaffirming your confidence in our work. Nothing excites us more than further embarking on this partnership to transfer, transform teaching and learning within Winton Woods City School District. We're pleased to welcome your schools to the New Tech Network, beginning with Winton Woods Middle School in the fall of '16. Additionally, we welcome Winton Woods Intermediate and Winton Woods Elementary in the fall of '17, and Winton Woods Primary North and Winton Woods Primary South in the fall of 2018. Throughout the Straight A Grant process, we have been impressed by your district's commitment to exploring the New Tech design through visits to New Tech schools and utilizing your own New Tech School AGS as opportunities to learn. Our intent for these experiences for district leaders and stakeholders is to develop a clear vision of how a partnership with New Tech will support the teachers and administrators in your community in designing powerful learning paths for all students. We're excited about your path plans to transform the district's schools in your district to be New Tech schools. We'll begin preparing for your New Tech School Agreement, which delineates the products and services and describes New Tech support as outlined in the Straight A Grant application, as well as defines the school district's responsibility. The next step in the planning process is attendance at Leadership Residency. Leadership Residency will begin the professional development pathway for those school leaders implementing in 2016. If you have any questions, our planning team is available to support you throughout the process, providing you with ongoing feedback and access to resources from across our network of innovative schools. Madam President and Board, the reason I read this from Ms. Dobbins, many schools have tried to become part of the New Tech experience, and many times they have been rejected. This is one of the few times, not only is a school being part of the New Tech experience, but our experience is very unique because we're becoming a New Tech district. So thank you for your support, thank you for your encouragement, and thank you for giving the kids the opportunity to be part of this project-based learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. Mr. Seymour, any comments from you?
No, thank you.
All right. Do we have a representative from the Teachers Association this evening? Okay. And how about for Oopsie?
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome the new members to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so Board, there is a need for an executive session this evening, so a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the discussion of matters of employment.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into executive session. Thank you all for your attendance, and for those of you staying with us, we will not be coming, we'll have to come back out of executive session, but there'll be no further business this evening.
And you have to take the cameras down.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. All right.